Now, I'd like to call the [inaudible 00:01:42]. I think you called the role, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Mr. Brown. Is in the hall. Uh, Alderwoman Crusen.
Here.
Commissioner Peoples.
Here.
Commissioner Powers, not present. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Mr. Boaz.
Here.
Mr. Stroud, not present, and Chair Visentainer.
Here.
And you have a call.
Thank you. Um, before we get started, I'd like to make an announcement that one of our distinguished members, Jennifer Allen, is departing the [inaudible 00:01:49]. And, uh, I think it's unfortunate for us because she's done a great job and provided different perspectives on a number of things and helped round up for us, so congratulations. Art, do you want to say anything?
Thanks, thanks. It's been a great experience serving with you guys too. Um, thank you so much for having me.
And you, [inaudible 00:01:54]. Tell us where you're going.
Sure. Uh, thank you, thank you. So, I'm moving to Brooklyn. Um, my mom's side of the family is from there. I've got friends there, so actually have been exploring this move for two years and it's happening. Um, I'm gonna work at a nonprofit organization. Um, it's basically like a Kickstarter for community projects. Um...
Who's in New York?
Uh-huh, it's in Brooklyn. It's called IOBY, which is spelled I-O-B-Y. And so, hopefully, actually, I'll get to wrap some of the work happening in St. Louis into our work. So, yeah.
Ooh.
Yeah, so I'm leaving pretty quickly. My first day is July 27th, so yeah, this is my last day.
Wow. Good.
Thank you.
Good luck and feel pretty consistent.
I will, I will.
Okay. Um, Roman, do you have any comments before we get started on the [inaudible 00:01:59]?
Yeah, um, I just wanna make sure that everybody received an email that was sent out earlier today with a couple of revised documents. One is a revised meeting agenda that was slightly altered. Um, and it basically had to do with re-titling one of the redevelopment plans. So, the one that is called the Costa Ustco Industrial Site Redevelopment Area, it's now, it's now classified as both a Chapter 99 and a Chapter 353 redevelopment plan. So, very minor change on that meeting agenda. But related to that is, uh, since we re-titled that particular redevelopment plan, there were some minor modifications in the actual resolution for that redevelopment area. And, uh, so you received two documents attached to this email. The first was the revised meeting agenda and the second was the revised Planning Commission Resolution for that Costa Ustco area. We have some extra copies of both documents if people didn't bring them tonight. I'd be happy to share. And, um, and I think Don warned you, uh, maybe warned's not the right word, but, uh, mentioned that we're gonna try and experiment with a new presentation format tonight. And that is basically, um, rather than doing a full-blown PowerPoint for each of the three redevelopment plans, I'll have a few slides, maybe three or four, for each of the redevelopment plans. But instead, I'll be referring to specific page numbers within the Planning Commission Resolution document. So, so it's important that everybody have a copy of those documents with them. And this is primarily done for the benefit of those people who are on the phone and wouldn't have a chance to see the PowerPoint. Now, it is gonna be a little awkward, I think, at times trying to thumb through back and forth through these documents, so we'll allow a little bit of time for people to get oriented. But, uh, if you need either that revised meeting agenda, um, or the revised resolution, or that packet, uh, let us know and, uh, we've got extra copies here.
Thank you. Uh, before we go into the, uh, under the action item number three, what do you, uh, covered minutes, uh, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, uh, to approve minutes during the discussion. Any questions? I think you called the role, please. Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Alderwoman Crusen. Alderwoman Crusen. Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Abstained.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Chair Visentainer.
Aye.
And the motion passes with, um, let's say, six ayes and two abstentions. We want that action item number three on the agenda, Roman.
Um, we have, um, only three Chapter 99 lighting studies and redevelopment plans tonight, and they all share a couple of common elements. Uh, the first is, um, they're all located within three or four blocks of each other.
Does someone just join?
Hi, this is Victor Alston.
Sorry, Victor Alston. Oh, very good. Uh, Victor, we're just getting started. This is Roman Cordell. Uh, Victor is one of the developers, uh, prospective developers for the second redevelopment plan. Victor, we're gonna, we're going, we're just starting on the first redevelopment plan and yours is gonna be up next.
Oh, that's a problem.
Um, as I mentioned, uh, all three of these redevelopment plans are located within three or four blocks of each other. Uh, two of them are in Sular and one of them is located across Seventh Street in the Costa Ustco industrial area. Um, and as part of that, uh, all three are located within seven blocks. So, you'll see a automatic support letter from Roman Cordell in all three pages of the redevelopment plan. Uh, the last element is, uh, that's common to all of them is with the Board of Order going down towards summer break, a week or so, all the prospective developers were anxious to get their redevelopment plan ordinance approved, rather than wait an additional couple of months for the Board of Order to come back in the fall. And as a result, uh, all three have had their automatic committee meetings. All of them have taken place prior to today. And obviously, the intent and the process is generally where the planning commission makes its recommendation to the full board as well as the individual committees. So, uh, things are a little bit out of order, but in this case, it has to do with the timing factor. Um, but with that, uh, let me, um, let me start off with the, uh, with the first redevelopment plan, and that is a, uh, Chapter 99 lighting study redevelopment plan from the 801 to 25 Ann Avenue area. And let me ask you to all, uh, take out your resolution for that particular item and just refer to page one, and also write a summary of this particular redevelopment plan and move forward. The site is about, um, an acre and a half. It, uh, it consists of a single parcel and it's located along Ann Avenue between Ninth and Seventh Streets in Sular. Existing uses the former Lafayette School Complex, um, which consists of a vacant school building attached to Navy, uh, that was attached to the [inaudible 00:01:59] and added on to the school building, decades after the school building was initially built, and a related former parking lot. Uh, the building was designed by Willie Midner, one of the giants in school building architecture. Um, and, uh, what's being proposed is the renovation and conversion of that school complex into Lafayette Lofts, which is the name of a $4 million development project that consists of 36 apartments and 50 parking spaces. If part of this sounds a little familiar to you, you may remember that about six months or so ago, uh, a smaller portion of this redevelopment area was reviewed by the planning commission for a rezoning. Uh, that was recommended for approval by the planning commission, ultimately passed by the Board of Order. The rezoning was passed. Uh, now they're coming into a lighting study redevelopment plan primarily to take advantage of the [inaudible 00:01:59]. The developer is 815 Ann, [inaudible 00:01:59]. He's affiliated with Advanced Development. Uh, this firm is based here in town as becoming a specialist in converting school buildings into apartments. Uh, as we mentioned, uh, during the rezoning, they converted a former Lutheran school in the South Hampton neighborhood into Mack Lofts. And are in the beginning stages of converting a former Sherman's School in the Shaw neighborhood into another apartment complex. Um, representing the firm here tonight is Brian Mendes of Advanced Development, and, uh, as well as David Sweeney of the law firm of Lake of Engage. Uh, let me now ask you to refer to pages 37 through 40 of this particular resolution. And what you see there are a, um, a variety of photographs of the school. Photos one through six show the school building, um, as well as gymnasium and the parking lot. And the remaining photos show the adjacent properties, um, which include a mix of residential and commercial uses. Um, and now, if you wouldn't mind, turning to, uh, the page 32, which includes a, uh, a site plan that was committed by the developer. Again, the development project is gonna have 36 units. Uh, that will be 12 units per floor. And I should flip that to the [inaudible 00:01:59]. Of the poles here. Um, and 50 off-street parking spaces. And, uh, some of those spaces will be provided in the attached gymnasium as well as the parking lot along Seventh Street. And the front of the building will include a plaza, a fountain, and, uh, and some green spaces. Uh, let me ask you to flip back to page three at this point. And, uh, the map, uh, shows the city's strategic land use plan in the western portion of the [inaudible 00:01:58]. Flip that over. Oops, I guess I don't have it, I'm sorry. Um, the western portion of the redevelopment area is an institutional preservation and development area, and the eastern portion is a neighborhood commercial area. So, you see two different patterns for the redevelopment area. Um, and they're both located to what's called a neighborhood preservation area, and that's located across the alley there, uh, and that block base runs under Russell. Um, and the, uh, city's strategic land use plan allows the planning commission to consider a development project to be in conformity with the, uh, with the strategic land use plan if that development project is allowed in the adjacent district. So, uh, a school building would be allowed in the neighborhood preservation area, and therefore, the planning commission can go ahead and make that determination. Oops. So, um, in terms of comments, the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan. Uh, it doesn't provide for the use of eminent domain. In this case, it is providing for the use of up to 10 years of tax abatement. And I did wanna point out that the renovation work on the building has been underway for some time. I guess it was shortly after the rezoning occurred. And the prospective developer attributes starting that renovation work prior to the approval due to his unfamiliarity with the redevelopment process. Um, staff is recommending approval of this lighting study and redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And, uh, Mr. Mendes and Mr. Sweeney are also available.
Do we have any [inaudible 00:01:55]? Or any comments? Have we received any input from the public?
No, not at all. This is, this is, uh, I did not attend the neighborhood development committee meeting, uh, but, uh, I can't really gauge just what comments were made. I mean, I have others. But what I do know that it happens more times than you'd like, but starting projects before the redevelopment plan is in place is not a, is not a best practice.
I did see that the Alderman made it up.
That's correct.
Uh, are there any questions for Roman? Uh, who's, uh, wanted to see, um, David, do you have anything to your [inaudible 00:01:59]?
I have, Mr. Bradley. That's very well. I have your [inaudible 00:01:59]. Uh, I mean, obviously, [inaudible 00:01:59]. Last, the next one, which we've already got [inaudible 00:01:59]. As the Shaw neighborhood and the Alderman, so we'll be, we'll be needing that application very shortly, so, um, unfortunately, it's [inaudible 00:01:59]. But I mean, and Brian speaks a little better, but I mean, obviously, there's inventory there and they continue to modify this [inaudible 00:01:59].
Second.
Oh. Could I ask the developer a question?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Brian, uh, I know this can't make sense, but what's the amenities in this project?
So... Uh, so there's two elevated verandas on the back, very public space. Um, where we have string lights and patio furniture for [inaudible 00:01:59]. The stairwell [inaudible 00:01:59]. They also have a workout room on the third floor. Uh, and then we also have a area on the left side that's a recreation pad with, um, picket tables, uh, parks, [inaudible 00:01:59]. And that's underwear, pets can kind of let their dogs, pets can come around in there. Uh, and then we have this garage parking, so...
An actual dog park, I remember. Then yours, they had a dog park inside, kind of like?
Oh, inside?
That's not yours, okay. I must be thinking somebody else.
Yeah, it's on the left side, basically.
Thank you. Love it. That's all I have.
Are there any other questions or questions? Well, we have a motion, a section on the floor. I think you called the role, please. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Alderwoman Crusen. Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Chair Visentainer.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting. Commissioner, that's our Alderwoman Crusen is no longer here. Seems like we lost her. Thank you. Roman, would you like to receive the [inaudible 00:01:59]?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. The, uh, the second lighting study redevelopment plan, um, tonight is the 721 Victor Street, slide 24 through 15, about Seventh Street area. This is, uh, a site of about one and a third acres. It consists of four parcels, and it's bounded by Barton, Seventh, Victor, and [inaudible 00:01:59]. Again, in Sular neighborhood. The, uh, uh, existing buildings are, and I should point out to those people on the phone that, uh, may wanna refer to page one and just sort of lay out the highlights of this particular redevelopment plan. The existing uses are three industrial buildings and a steel storage yard that are occupied by Victor Ironworks. Uh, some of you may see their sign as you're driving down Second Street. Um, it also includes two industrial buildings that are occupied by another for Production Steel Incorporated. And the redevelopment area also includes, um, the north-south alley that bisects that particular block. The redevelopment plan is proposing the demolition of all the buildings on that block and the construction of Whistler Apartments, a $15 million development project that consists of 118 housing units, um, 89 parking spaces, and also falls through the vacation of that alley, that north-south alley. The prospective developer is Whistler One LLC, uh, which is affiliated with Aspirant Properties, um, which owns and manages several apartment buildings in the city, most of which are in the central corridor. And representing the firm tonight is Victor Alston. Um, Victor, are you there on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, terrific. Just wanna make sure you're still there.
Yeah, here.
I'm going through the presentation, and, uh, when I wind up, uh, the planning commission will, uh, open it up for questions, both for yourself and myself. Um, let me ask you then to stay on page one. And, uh, the people who are here, um, in the 1520 Market Street building, they've got the benefit of an aerial photo of the redevelopment area and vicinity, which isn't available, uh, in, in the resolution. But, um, the, the buildings on the right side of the block here are all occupied by Victor Ironworks. The two buildings here are occupied by Production Steel. And then what's, uh, also included in the redevelopment area is that southern portion of the, uh, of that north-south alley. Um, the adjacent parcel on the block, I'm not prepared, uh, this particular building there is a former Polar Wave Ice Factory, which was recently converted into an apartment building called the Sular Life Ice House by the same firm that's proposing this particular development project. Um, let me now refer you to pages 34 and 37 of the resolution, um, which has some photographs of the, uh, the redevelopment area and the vicinity. Um, photos one through six show the industrial buildings that are currently on the site as well as the alley. Photos seven through nine, uh, show the adjacent, uh, ice factory that was converted into the apartment building by the same developer. And then in terms of adjacent uses, uh, just south beside photo 10 is Humboldt School. Uh, the Sular Garden Co-op, uh, is catty-corner to the site. It's located at, uh, or Sheldon Road 13. And the rest of the area is primarily a mix of residential uses and, uh, and corner bars, although generally not as high density as this apartment [inaudible 00:01:59]. Um, let me now refer you to page 31 of the resolution. And that's also shown here in our building. Um, and this is a, uh, an architectural rendering, rendering of the proposed development project submitted by the developer. Uh, you can see the building is substantial inside. It's five stories, approximately 100,000 square feet. And this development project, uh, has been reviewed by a number of other city bodies. And I suspect Victor, uh, has probably lost track of all the [inaudible 00:01:59]. And, uh, regarding the development project, but let me just quickly run through them. The city's preservation board, um, approved, reviewed and approved the demolition of the, uh, the existing industrial buildings as well as the construction of this building. Although I understand that some residents, uh, at that meeting, uh, expressed some reservations, uh, basically that they felt the building was a little out of scale with, uh, the immediate vicinity. Uh, in addition to that, the city's board of adjustment granted a use variance and another variance for this particular project. The use variance would basically allow this, uh, residential building to be built in a J industrial district, um, uh, which generally doesn't permit residential buildings. The other variance, uh, would allow the apartment building to have only 89 off-street parking spaces, uh, rather than the required one space per housing unit. So, rather than having, uh, 119 parking spaces, uh, they're being permitted to just provide 89 off-street parking spaces. But the developer did agree, as part of this session, to provide bike racks for, for 40 bicycles, uh, on the premise that many of these, um, tenants will be students and others who may not rely, um, on, uh, having their own vehicles. Again, I, I understand there were a fair number of people who showed up at the board of adjustment meeting who weren't particularly happy about the [inaudible 00:01:59]. And the fact of it. But they may have more difficulty in being able to find a parking space in the immediate vicinity. Um, and then the last city body that's reviewing this development project for one aspect or another is the city's street department, which is reviewing the vacation of, of that particular alley. Um, let me now, uh, refer you to page three of the resolution, which shows the, uh, the strategic land use plan now. And the, uh, the strategic land use plan gavenate the entire site as an opportunity area. And, uh, as you remember from the last several sessions where Dick Zariga has been making several presentations with regards to reclassifying some of those opportunity areas into different classifications, uh, to try to be a little bit more proactive. This is one of the few areas that he recommended should remain as an opportunity area. And, uh, I don't know if Dick was aware that this project was coming down the pipe or not, but, uh, this is in fact an opportunity area. It was intended to be an opportunity area. Um, so, uh, in summary, the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan. It does not provide for eminent domain. It does provide for the use of up to 10 years of tax abatement. And staff is recommending approval of the, of the lighting study and redevelopment plan with, uh, an additional recommendation, and that is, as a follow-up measure, um, staff as well as the city's planning administrator recommend that the, the entire block, not just the redevelopment area, be rezoned from that J industrial district to a more appropriate zoning district that would allow those two apartment buildings. So, this would be sort of a, a retroactive thing, but it may cause, or it, it may save the developer and the, uh, the owner of the property some, some headaches in the future if he ever tries to refinance the project or deal with the banks and find, and they find out that the site is built industrial, even though there's a variance in place. That, that's the, uh, that's the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and this is Victor Alston, uh, of Aspirant Properties is also [inaudible 00:01:59].
So, are any of the buildings vacant right now? Are the property owners using the building?
Uh, I, to the best of my knowledge, they're all occupied. I, when I was taking photographs, I did, um, speak with, uh, the owner of Victor Ironworks, elderly gentleman, and, uh, he mentioned, I, I asked him if, uh, there was some, uh... It was unclear as to whether the, the properties had already been purchased by the prospective developer or just under contract. And the lovely, I, he saw me taking photographs, wondered what I was doing. We talked, and he said, confirm that the property is in fact under contract.
So, I mean...
And I, and I don't know whether, what his intentions are, whether he's going to relocate that business or if the business is gonna close. Uh, I didn't talk with the, uh, the owner of the other business on the premise of it. And Mr. Alston, are you aware of any of that, uh, what their plans are in the future?
Yeah, there's two businesses there, and they're both in operation today. And one, the gentleman will retire, and the other will relocate, um, hopefully, hopefully nearby, you know, is what he's, he's looking at.
Which, which gentleman will retire? Is that the guy with Victor Ironworks that I talked with? The elderly guy?
I'm not sure, yeah, they're, one, one's very elderly, um, but it's the, it's the, the site that's on Seventh Street. That site...
Yeah.
That's on Seventh Street is, uh, you know, they're selling off the business and they're gonna retire.
That, that's the gentleman I talked with, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the other business will be relocating.
Yeah, the, the business is on Seventh and, uh, sorry, is on Victor and, uh, Ninth. They'll relocate and...
They'll relocate.
I, I know they were looking Sular ideally to relocate, and I, I think they have, they're still looking, or they might have found a couple of options that they're negotiating.
We may have a site for them in our next redevelopment plan.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if somebody has a site or something like that, please let me know, Roman, and, uh, I can connect them. I know that somebody in our office is actually helping them to, to, to find a site as well.
Victor, the, the next redevelopment plan is for the, uh, I'm not sure if you caught the, my introductory comments, uh, is dealing with a industrial area on the other side of Seventh Street in the Costa Ustco area that was formerly occupied by, um, Lucia and Monsanto. And a developer is proposing to develop a business park for commercial and industrial uses. And, uh, why don't I do this? There's a, an attorney who's representing the, that particular developer. If you don't mind, I'll pass along your phone number to her and ask her to give you a call and maybe put, uh, maybe to pass along the information with regards to the owner of Production Steel and see if they're interested in relocating a couple of blocks away on the other side of Seventh Street.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions?
Is it open for developer or just staff?
Either one.
Okay, um, is it Allen?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Allen, is that his name?
Uh, Austin.
Austin, I'm sorry. Mr. Austin, this is Alderman Jeffrey Boyd. Um, you have, how many units you're planning, 100 and how many again? For the, for the site?
Uh, I think we're gonna have about 118, uh, units and maybe an office site.
118, and how many parking spaces?
Uh, 89.
89, and you're gonna accommodate the deficit in parking space? Eighty-nine, and you're going to accommodate the deficit in parking spaces with some bike racks?
Uh, no, I mean, not necessarily. I mean, bike racks are one good option, in general, I mean, for the folks that live there. But also, you know, when we presented as a Board of Adjusters, the rationale was, for one, that the base of, the demographic that we deal with is not always using cars. I mean, we have thirteen hundred units in St. Louis, and we deal with a demographic of professionals, and some of them are Uber users, some of them are car users, some of them are rideshare users. Not everybody's a car user, and so that is a, that is a significant reason for our looking to go to eighty-nine parking spots. Obviously, we want the project to survive, and we want to be able to sell the project on the back end and make money off of it. So parking's vital, it's important, but we just want to make sure it's a right amount. The other rationale is that, you know, we're on two streets there, Victor and Seventh, and Barton as well, and, you know, we have the, we have an apartment complex with forty, forty-two units there today. And most of that space is, on those streets, is currently not occupied by any, nobody's using that for parking, the street. Obviously, anybody can park there. Our argument and our discussion with Board of Adjusters was that nobody really parks there. We've done some assessments to show who parks there at different times during the day and the evening, and it's really unused, especially if these businesses were to go away. And as a result, we felt that it was a good, good, good variance to approve, and that was our logic. And I had support from other local businesses that were in the remaining few blocks as well, who came and supported us with the Board of Adjusters. And there were some neighbors that were concerned about parking as well, and we spoke to them at that meeting, but that was the conclusion. Those were the reasons we thought that was still a viable approach.
And if you had to guess off-street parking, how many spaces would you guess that's probably not being used right now?
Somewhere between twenty-five to thirty.
So if you got ninety, the first ninety people renting an apartment, and all of them needed at least one parking space, the rest of the folks would just have to park on the street? They wouldn't have-
Yeah, and I'll give you an example. We have, they would have to park on the street if they all needed cars, some of them might not need cars. The current building that we have in Sular, the forty-two unit thing, we have twenty-eight or thirty parking spots, including some tandem parking spots in front of the building. So it's a, it's not unrealistic, that building is leased up, the average rents are fairly high, and, you know, we're renting at a dollar seventy-five to eighty-five a square foot for a historic project in Sular, so, you know, it's a viable project. These are good market rents, and we're getting people to pay them, and the building's loomed up, and it has a similar parking profile. Not to say that, you know, we wouldn't like to get more parking, if we can figure out how to do that and keep it at the cost basis that we have, we'd like to do that. It only helps the project. But this was put forward because we didn't think that was possible without going underground and digging underground. And also, we had an earlier version that was in front of the Sular group, and the height was a very important thing, so we didn't want to go higher. So there are a variety of variables there that we looked at, but this seemed like a prudent option.
Okay, well, it's your money, you probably know better than I do. I'm just processing logically. I understand that everyone doesn't have a car, but anyway, it's your project.
Yeah, there's a hundred and thirty bedrooms.
Okay.
And eighty parking.
I have no further questions.
I have just one question for clarity. So even though your name is Victor, you have no association with Victor Ironworks, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have an association, although it's a good name.
Okay.
Oh, I do, I do, I do want, so, the people who need to move, is it a hostile move, is it a friendly move?
I mean, it's first time we're buying a building.
Huh?
I mean, it's pretty friendly, they're selling their building, we're buying it, we made them offer, and they-
Oh, okay, you bought it from them, okay.
And that's what made it not certain, Chris.
No, I understood that, but I'm not, maybe I got lost in the conversation, with it seeming like they needed to move, and I wasn't sure if they were the current owners, so I misunderstood.
No, they, both of the, both of the owners have owned it for a lengthy period of time, and we made them offers, and, you know, they agreed to the offers.
And one question about blight, so they're occupied buildings, what is it that classifies as a blighted area and is occupied?
No, great question. They are occupied. I think to some extent, and the developer would know better than I do, they're both, both businesses are involved in steel processing, which you could imagine after a period of years probably results in some contamination in some form, whether it be at the ground or elsewhere. But I'm not familiar with that particularly. The other thing I would make reference to, and it's not directly pertinent to blighting, my general sense is that, and I think there's a reference to it in the support letter from Alderman Cotard, where he basically feels that the area, the Sular neighborhood, has been transitioning from an industrial area, at least on that eastern periphery along Seventh Street, into more of a residential and mixed-use area, and thinks that perhaps because when some of those industrial uses were there. And these are, for steel processing firms, these are very, very small operations, that, you know, they may not be viable as industrial uses in the future. But in terms of the buildings themselves, surprisingly, they're not in as bad a condition as you would think. It's not helping the blighting argument. Mr. Alston, do you have any information with regards to what sort of cleanup you're going to have to do once those buildings are torn down?
Yeah, we've done a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental. One of the buildings is kind of an open-air, it's part of this enclosure, but a lot of this open air, open to the air, and there's a variety of steel production there, and that's the one, that's the site that borders Seventh Street. And there's some asbestos cleanup and lead cleanup going maybe three feet deep or four feet deep, and then there's some heavy, heavy elements and minerals that are deposited as well. And there's a few different plans on how to fix that up and treat that, so there's some soil management plans, and also some sites, some of the site that we'd have to dig up and haul away. But I guess, general feeling of the neighborhood was that that site was a little bit more of an eyesore, was not kept very well, and, you know, there's a lot of steel production that's publicly visible, and so it makes it harder to develop that area. So that site, we got more feedback from the neighborhood, especially the restoration group at that site, did seem like an eyesore to them for a variety of reasons, and didn't seem fitting as the neighborhood grew. The other site, the other building, is a much nicer building, and all of it's self-contained, you can't see any of the production really intern, inside, except maybe one opened their garage doors, the bay door, so. That site's a much nicer site, and we had to pay a lot more money to buy it.
Any other questions or comments?
Move approval.
You have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Make an motion and second to approve, change discussion?
Previous roll.
I don't have a resolution.
She wasn't on the previous one.
Other woman, Kristen?
Yeah, we'll consider her gone.
We have a request for previous roll, any objection?
Jackson.
Can you call the roll, please?
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Sheriff of Zimpani. And motion passes with all but one present voting yes.
So then you're locked.
Did Mr. Alston hang up?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Okay, did somebody just join?
Thank you, Mr. Alston, your resolution was passed, we'll forward a notification letter to the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you talking to me.
Thank you, good night.
Roman? I don't remember.
The last redevelopment plan tonight is the one that's now classified as open, chapter ninety-nine, the former statutory redevelopment plan. And this is the redevelopment plan I mentioned to you earlier, that was slightly modified and emailed to you earlier today. And I'm going to ask, I included in that email message, an attempt to try to explain why it was necessary to make that change, but I'm going to have David Meyer to go ahead and explain that, I'm sure he could do a better job than I did.
Well, and just so you all understand, this was a modification on this one because of the way that it reached the Planning Commission, but you're going to see this probably on any Chapter Ninety-nine, other than for a ten-year tax abatement. The reason we're cross-referencing Chapter Three-Fifty-Three is because of the way that we implement the tax abatement itself. In order to actually abate the taxes, a urban redevelopment corporation established under Chapter Three-Five-Three actually has to own the property. The Board of Aldermen this spring, recently, just went into effect in the last, say, six weeks or eight weeks, made a modification to the city code to clarify what we've been doing all along, which is using an urban redevelopment corporation to implement the tax abatement. Councilor Thompson Coburn had raised the issue, and Councilor LCRA agreed, so we're going to be doing this in the future. But again, it's a similar standard to what you see in Chapter Ninety-nine, and the blighting plan and study and plan are also going to be parallel. So for anything other than ten years, and again, it's a technical issue related to the implementation of the abatement itself, but we'll be seeing both Chapter Ninety-nine and Three-Five-Three blighting standards and plans going forward. I apologize, it's hard to explain even to the people who do this all the time, and I'm probably not being very clear, but-
Yeah, and as the Chair of Neighborhood Development, I certainly want to understand better, so. The ten years would relate to-
Chapter Ninety-nine authorizes tax abatement to be implemented based on an affidavit, because at the time the statute was opened up, they were only doing ten-year tax abatement. Subsequently, the city's gone into other, well, customarily doing ten-year tax abatements. Often now, we do five-year tax abatements that require to pass through the property. We do fifteen-year, if we do seven-year, if we do anything other than ten-year, it requires a title transfer. That's caused a number of problems over the years, confused people because they're actually having to transfer the title. We've come up with other means and talked of that, but this system requiring the title transfer through Chapter Three-Five-Three, something that FLC is doing, I believe, was made a difference in cooperation with the last fifteen, probably twenty years now. But there was never anything that was clear in our actual resolutions and any of our legal processes we went through the Board of Aldermen, that the Three-Five-Three standard was met, even though we were using that chapter in the statute.
Okay.
So this is clarifying that we're actually meeting the Three-Five-Three standards as well, and at this point, not that anybody has, but it's even less likely to be challenged as we implement the tax abatement.
Okay. You're the counsel for LCRA as well?
That would be true.
Okay. So we'll get together sometime, before the end of the summer? Because it can be very complicated, this whole process.
With that, unless there are any other questions, I'll proceed. This is a, again, a Chapter Ninety-nine and a Chapter Three-Fifty-Three blighting study redevelopment plan for Costa Yusto Industrial Site One, redevelopment area. If you would refer to page one of the resolution, go ahead and provide a summary of the redevelopment plan and move on from there. The site is approximately forty acres in size, it consists of twelve parcels located on nine city blocks. Basically, the site is bounded on the north by Les Bruns, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure if Les Bruns even exists as a street anymore, but the street name continues to appear. Bounded on the east by South First Street, and in the case of South First Street, it really isn't a street, it's completely occupied by railroad tracks. Union Pacific has a major line going along that stretch. Bounded on the south by Barton Street, and depending upon how you want to look at it, bounded on the west by either Second or Third. And then we have one parcel off by itself, a block or so down. It's a little bit different. The existing uses are either vacant lots or unused parking lots, all of which were previously used by Monsanto Company and/or Solution Incorporated, and they were used for industrial and commercial purposes. What's being proposed is a ten-point-eight million dollar development of a business park that would include either commercial or industrial uses, and the prospective developer is interested in preparing that site for redevelopment, and that would include the elements that are listed on the slide. They've already done a lot of environmental remediation of the site, they'd like to finish that, they'd like to remove the deteriorated improvements. You'll see some photographs of piles of concrete rubble where buildings used to, you know, is, they're proposing a variety of improvements to the site, the construction of streets, as well as the subdivision of the site into the lot. Those new lots would then be sold to sub-developers, who would then develop those individual lots. So in essence, the prospective developer is setting the groundwork for the development of an industrial park and doing a compending of it. The developer is SWH Investments Two LLC, which is affiliated with Environmental Operations Incorporated. This is an environmental services company that's headed by Stacy Hasty, and representing the firm tonight is Barbara Geisman of the Thompson Coburn Law Firm. Let me now ask you to refer to page twenty-four of the resolution, for those of you who have a copy of the resolution. And the folks here at Fifteen Twenty have a little better map to work with, it's an aerial photograph of the site. And despite the fact that the map on page twenty-four of the redevelopment plan shows about four buildings on the site, I can assure you, and the aerial photograph shows, that all of the buildings are now down, there are no buildings present on a particular site. And you can see that the Union Pacific has a major rail line, as well as some additional yards going further north, and barge traffic along the particular area to the east. You can also see, these are partial boundary lines at this point, you can see that there are very, very few, if any, streets within the interior of the particular site. I should point out, this leg up here, which we're not absolutely certain is a parcel, is actually a right-of-way of Second Street, which used to have a railroad, some railroad tracks going along it. Let me, with that as giving you some basic background information, let me refer you to pages forty-two through forty-five of the resolution. And photos one through eighteen basically show you the current status of the redevelopment area, these are photos that were taken within the last week, a week or so. And as I mentioned earlier, you'll see piles of concrete rubble over the vacant lots and former parking lots, so none of this land is being used productively at this point in time. And in particular, showing photo fifteen of the new railroad tracks, and you can see how close this site is to downtown skyline to the north. And also photo sixteen, which shows the opposite- which shows the offices of Environmental Operations Incorporated, uh, which is located just a couple of blocks, uh, to the north of redevelopment area, so obviously this aren't, um, no things and outs of, of an area, uh, located nearby, uh, now let me refer you to page forty of the, uh, the redevelopment plan, and, uh, this is a preliminary conceptual site plan of the redevelopment area that was submitted by the prospective developer and, uh, again, this is quite the area, um, but it does show the look, and I'm sorry, I didn't flip the slide there, um, it, it shows the locations of possible new parcels, uh, um, those are shown on the, uh, on the site plan above, uh, and potential new streets that would be carved into, um, the redevelopment area, as well as some potential building footprints and, and how they would be sited, um, and, uh, you probably can't make it out, uh, but at the, below the, uh, the site plan is some facts and figures with regards to the, uh, the land usage and the number of jobs, uh, to be created, and again, these are preliminary estimates, but, uh, the hope is that a half-million square feet of commercial and industrial uses, uh, would be constructed, uh, providing, uh, roughly thirteen-hundred jobs at this particular site, um, let me now refer you to page four of the resolution, this is our strategic land use, uh, plan map, but I still have that on the, uh, on the PowerPoint, so hopefully everybody has that, and you, and you can see that entire redevelopment area is classified as a business industrial development area, and so this is a, a classic example of what, what kind of development was envisioned for this area, um, that, uh, particular strategic land use category calls for either new industrial parks or new office parks or, or just new, uh, developments of industrial and commercial uses of, of any sort of scale, I should point out the site is also Zone J Industrial District or, or K Unrestricted District, which, uh, which allows most industrial uses, um, so the, um, sorry, the, uh, the, uh, this particular chapter ninety-nine and chapter three fifty-three blighting study redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, it does not provide for the use of eminent domain, uh, in this case, the prospective developer owns eleven of the twelve parcels and is in negotiations to acquire the last parcel, um, the redevelopment plan does provide for the use of up to twenty-five years of tax abatement, and I gather this was a bone of some contention at, uh, an Alderman Committee meeting, uh, with the first ten years of, of, uh, of the tax abatement being at one-hundred percent or full rate and the, uh, the next fifteen years being at fifty percent, and, uh, this request is based on a, a number of factors and I think Barbara will probably touch, uh, on this a little bit in, in a minute or two, but basically it, uh, takes into account the high cost of environmental remediation on, on this particular, on this particular site, so staff is recommending approval of, of this chapter ninety-nine and one hundred and three fifty-three blighting study redevelopment plan, I'd be happy to answer any questions and Barbara Geisman of Thompson Coburn is also there.
Do we have any questions for Roman right now? Mark, would you like to, or say anything?
Um, just a couple of quick comments, the main reason that the developers have twenty-five year tax, uh, is because property is not eligible for our bounty, it is an EPA resource conservation and recovery X site and the EPA is in charge of watching over and communicating the happens there, so Mr. Hasty attempted, he, the EPA, to give up its control of the site and give it to the state G N R, but this was a huge chemical plant, it's, it's hard to tell how big the site is from looking at pictures, and they produced a lot of god awful stuff that my potty used to bring home and we'd do things with when I was a kid, like fentanyl and trichlorazone and all these horrible things that are now illegal, and all that stuff was on the site, so Mr. Hasty bought it from somebody who would have just let it sit there forever and others and not get cleaned up, and he proceeded to do a whole bunch of the environmental remediation, but, um, he can't recover all his costs without the brownfield credit, you know, and without tax abating subsequent to the brownfield credit, so the tax abatement being requested would permit the land to be sold at a slightly higher price, so Mr. Hasty can recover more of the cost, and then the tax abatement would be passed on to the new, this is the developers on the site, and the site is competing with things like Aviator Business Park and Angelwood, that he has twenty-five year tax, but it went to like Mr. Butt, and also receives brownfield credit and it now comes into earnings and sales tax, so there's a competition, so that could be overcome to get people to go up there.
And, um, so, and any questions, are there any questions for, kind of?
No, well, I don't make a comment because this did come through Neighborhood Development and I had a lot of trepidation when it was first presented because I didn't clearly understand it because it's not the normal process when we do tax abatement, normally there's a real potential, um, tenant, if you will, just like the pass-to, the school and the other project, we, we know who's coming, what's coming, so on and so forth, so I was real hesitant about supporting twenty-five year tax abatement because it's just, the perception of something can happen, um, but in talking with, you know, Barb and Stacy Hasty and being convinced that someone is actually out there in competition for the site, I became supportive and I just trust that, you know, that, you know, is what it is, and I know that in the city there's a lot of competition, um, we're always concerned about somebody going to the county, but I think a lot of us would argue that the city is a jewel, a gem, and that we don't always have to give away as much as we give away, and that's why I'm kinda happy that we're gonna start really looking at tips and tax abatement and how we incentivize it, um, whereby the city, you know, gets a fairer share, not that they're not getting a fair share, but a fairer share, a larger piece of the pie, um, so anyway, I just wanted to make that commentary because, you know, I am on record of having a concern about it and I did hold the bill until I met with them and then had a subsequent meeting and we did pass the bill out of committee.
Any other questions?
Kind of along those lines, and so there's been no tenants identified in sort of the site plan that we, it's very conceptual.
He's talking to a couple of people, um, they are not willing to commit to the site without tax abatement and, um, it's, it's still kinda up in the air, so, um, and I guess that's one other point is that you can't just chop off a little pieces and sell it to somebody, you have to build the road and you have to finish all the crating and, uh, utilities, bring it to the plats and the groundwater management, so there's a lot of upfront investment that has to be done before you can sell the first one, and then you're like, Alderman Boyd said, taking a week to say that people will keep coming and it's gonna go this upfront, man.
Is there any consideration being given to respecting the street, Chris?
Well, there is no street right now, I mean, uh...
Well, I'm just thinking of this potential new road.
Yeah, and getting the same block as opposed to... Road, they go to the... So, the idea here with this hypothetical road is to, um, have large developable sites that we can launch it to business with, because one of the things the city doesn't have a lot of is assembled acreage, the business city kind of stuff where people can go on and, but at the same time to, um, make the streets such that every of these, uh, divided parcels will have access to a street continuum, places where people can get in and out of their, their lives, so, you got it?
Yeah, yeah.
There we go, um, so anyway, this kinda follows that street there and there is the street that used to be kinda there, so it kinda does, but it's not looking at putting back all the streets because that way you wouldn't have a big parcel.
Right, Google, in Google Maps it still has streets, so I don't know how old that, um, aerial is.
Well, it, it may have paved surfacues, but they were all, I don't know, it was like internal access road.
Yeah, anyway, just a thought.
Yeah.
It seems like a more appealing label for it.
Well, and, and that's kinda the, I guess, conflict, if you will, is that, um, on the one hand, you want everything to be well-designed and urban, but on the other hand, you need to get places where businesses can locate and businesses don't like going to little video lots, same use video lots.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm simply saying that one street that does connect, gee, wouldn't it be nice if it connected, if it connected in not just dead ending to Second Street, but connecting with one of the streets slightly north or slightly, slightly south.
Oh, okay.
So that's, yeah, as opposed to aligning and not aligning.
See, I think this was a street, but I think we're wrong.
No.
Maybe we can find directions and...
Because it goes to the riverfront.
That street grid is, is very, very confusing, in, in, there are in fact some streets that exist out there, but I don't think they're public streets anymore, they, they have, they dated and, uh...
I get you, Roman, all I'm saying is that Russell comes right in here to Second Street and dead ends into a building and the, the next street south does the same thing, and if there is necessarily a street halfway in between the block, and that's one of the challenges, we've got an M.L.K. of all these misaligned streets, so why not align where you can, that's all I'm, and I know that's not, I'm greatly, but, you know.
Can I see this?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, it's a little finicky.
Yeah, it is.
(laughing). There you go.
There you go.
Do I have it?
Yes.
Or is it?
Exactly.
It was unappealing, it was like, oh.
Yeah, it's a little.
Oh, my goodness, oh, there we go, so Tracy, what you're saying, like this street right here, you could use that street and come in.
Right.
And then it looks like there's no street down here though that, that would run, but I see, I get your point here because that's what we suffer with on M.L.K. in my neighborhood, you have those offsets and just basically run straight into the street.
Right.
So, that's a pretty good comment.
And, uh, I'll talk to you.
For consideration.
And it's mainly just to be able to, with a C building and space between that and the property line to make the market.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or discussion? No approval? A motion to approve?
Second.
Tracy can have it.
Tracy can have it, does anyone have your last opportunity?
No, you can.
Any, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? Could you call the roll please?
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Uh, Chair of Visiting members.
Aye.
Motion passes with all present.
And Roman, we have no further business?
Uh, we don't, uh, one, one thing I will point out is, uh, oh, I guess it's not on there, but on the, uh, on your, uh, meeting agenda, the, the next scheduled meeting is, uh, is August the third, and as you know, uh, we try to avoid having a meeting in August, uh, to the extent possible, but, uh, I, I think for the time being we should just plan on, on attending, but, uh, I think Don will keep us informed if, uh, people meet or not in August.
Have to be, I know.
Well, I understand people have vacation plans and all of those, he returns, uh, from vacation on Monday, I'll mention to him that some people, uh, to the extent possible would like to know if, uh, some advance notice, part of, part of the issue is that, uh, some of the items that come to us, uh, have a, a forty-five day time clock associated with them and, uh, if, uh, if, if we don't act in August, we may lose our opportunity to review that particular thing, and that's the unpredictable nature of it, but I will mention that, uh, some people would, to the extent possible, like to have as much advanced notice as possible, whether the meeting is in August or not.
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn?
No, move. Second.
Second. Hey, hey, aye?
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.